Okay, but you can only vote in your.
Yeah, our district, yeah. And the lower the turnout, the better for them.
All right, we're recording, so let's go ahead and do six o'clock call our meeting to order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you, Dan. All right. Do you have any additions to our agenda?
Yes, we have one new contract and one resignation.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm hoping to prove.
Dan?
Second.
Thank you, Jessica. And Joe, is there any discussion with the agenda? For all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First, we have a presentation for our resource officers. Resource officer. I guess today, welcome.
Thank you. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Sergeant Patrick Hansen. I experiment. And I'm in charge of what we call the COPS unit, which is community outreach programs and services, which oversees school resource officers and community engagement. So I'm just gonna, our report is in writing. I think it got submitted this morning. But I'm just gonna touch on just a few things. So for this last school year, we had eight school resource officers. We also had a few staffing changes over the year. So first, we added a commander overseeing, I guess. So Jason, he can't be here tonight, but was planning on being here. We had Liberty School Resource Officer Amy Feldman. She, in December, she decided she wanted to go be a detective, so we lost her. So Officer Swigum from Cheney went to Liberty. And then we added Heather Kraus as an SRO. Things were going really good with him. He's actually on patrol for the summer. And so he took over at Cheney. And then Ryan Feldman, at the end of the school year, decided that he also wanted to go be a detective. So I like to tease him that he's the junior Feldman detective. So since he left, we added two more SROs, one at Horace High. And that is, he was just a little bit about Lee, he's not in the photo. But Lee has 17 years of prior law enforcement. And when he was working for Grand Horse County, they didn't have a formal, like, school resource deputy or SRO program. But they told him, for the schools, make sure that things going good, you know, be there to support them. So he has a little bit of experience working in those schools, so he will be down at Horace. And then thank you to you guys. We added another school resource officer, Sari, I'm gonna butcher her last name, Cuera. Hope I'm saying that right. She is going to be the third elementary SRO. And look forward to adding her.
Well.
So Sari Tyler and Lee are all going to Natural Basic here at the end of the month down at Horace High. Other things, been looking through the report, the incidents were just slightly up from last year, but so was the student population. So I'm not really alarmed by those numbers. Actually did a little bit more digging into those numbers. And we only had 94 of these reports out of the entire school year. But that can see somebody coming to the school saying, hey, something was taken out of my locker. There's, there was a few, like, I correct all the reports for the SROs. So I, I kind of know what kind of reports we're getting. And there was reports in there, like, something happened at home over the weekend, but it was just easier for the SRO to take it instead of having another obstacle in the school. So that 94 is not alarming to me at all. But I think it's pretty, I didn't go back and look at the last few years, but I think it's pretty comparable. And then some of the contributing factors to why we saw so many incidences and, or not even so many, but why we saw these incidences and, and incident reports is just the rise in behavioral mental health concerns. And hopefully help that out. Thanks to you guys again. We have the comfort dog program that we entered into our second year. And we added Labby with Officer Roll. That was a huge success. The comfort dogs are tremendous asset for us. We utilize them all the time. We have more of a problem on how do we keep track of their numbers and like, how many times should we utilize? It's, it's just too many. It's, we have a really good method to keep track of that. With our other dogs, we have like the canine call for service that we get entered. It's, they're in the school and some kids having a bad day. And just a little bit of Labby time or Bella time totally turns things around. And how do you, like, stop call for call for service? We don't really do that. So it's hard to really know how much they've been utilized. For, for other stuff, where more formal events, we keep track of that. So, and those numbers are obviously way up. Just a little bit about SRO Pearson. So last year, I put him in for Employee of the Year. And he was chosen for that, so he received an award. And later this month, he's going to be receiving another award at the National Chiefs Association for Employee of the Year. So that, if he was one of mine after that for him, so he's doing awesome. Awesome work in the school, plus developing the comfort dog program, stuff like that. And other big moves for Officer Pearson, he was just selected to be NASR O Division Eight Director, which oversees, I'm gonna have to read this, North Dakota, South Dakota, Minnesota, Nebraska, Wisconsin, and Michigan. So in July, at the NASR Conference in Phoenix, he will actually be sworn in and will be in office at that time. So he's pretty excited.
He doesn't have to drive dogs.
Yeah, we're still trying to figure out, like, how many of those are gonna be, like, teams meetings? And how many of them you'll have to actually go to. And then SRO Valdek, who I thought was gonna be here tonight. He has also chosen to kind of go down the NASR O instructor path. And I think we've got everything lined up where he's gonna actually help each at this NASR Basic at the end of this month down at Horace. So just kind of a little bit of feather in their cap. And the last thing I had is, just because being school year is done, you know, we still have summer school. We still have three SROs that are in summer school. We're also trying some new program, or not new, but we're bringing back some programs for some of the learners and students in our, our school district. The Hometown Heroes is, it's a big one. That fills up every year. It's, it's an awesome event. Takes three days. I think we're doing it, actually, where some of us will be at the NASR office, but down at the Rustic Center. And we have, we brought back the summer swim program. So that's, it was kind of geared for maybe kids who worked in the community that don't know how to swim. We, I was shooting for six, we ended up for 10. So that's going good. We have other organizations coming to us wanting to help fund this. That's how much, you know, other organizations can even this program. So we, we do it on Tuesdays and Thursdays at Hubbard. And I think only three children have to be at us, so we'll go pick them up. The rest of us just meet us there. It's Tuesdays and Thursdays throughout the month, too. An awesome program. I, I guess that's all I really had. Stanford, questions?
I have a quick question for you. One, thank you. I mean, we really do appreciate all that you do as resource objects in our schools. And I think the kids have really found some value in it, too. And as we talk about the comfort dogs, and I know you said you can't really quantitate how effective they are, but I think if we could find a way to quantify so that we can get more, and I know Labby was a help of one of our community members, I think we could see more of those. So however that might look, I would just maybe encourage you to find a way to quantitative, so give some qualitative data to go back to the public and say why they're so valuable, beside that they're just cute. But I, I think there's a lot. I was just talking to somebody with my dad, somebody he worked, we needed to speak with. He was just talking about her daughter and how much Labby was, must have been at Aurora, and now we saved her daughter's whole fourth grade year at the end of the year. She was having some sort of crisis and she came in and saved the day. And I'm like, something so simple, so.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to find a way for them, instead of the call for service, because that's not working. You're saying you get busy too fast and then you don't make the call for service. I mean, this could happen multiple times, like, well, Dora or Todd at one school that day. So we're trying to find a way to kind of, like, put a number behind that.
Yeah.
Maybe as if they just keep a lot of themselves. I, I know, I, I had asked them for, our chief was looking for a strategic plan, looking forward to the future. And that was the same thing that the chief wanted. So, you know, we, we put the best numbers we had at the time. Todd probably kept a little bit better track because he was in his second year with Labby or with Bella. So that's, that's something that we're still working on. We just gotta, they're doing a good job. We just gotta find a way to get it out there.
I know it's true, Heather, the dual purpose dogs that are not just drug dogs, but also, you know, please pet me dogs. I love that idea. Maybe that's where it needs to go, so then you can use them in both capacities. And I know it's different training, but that was so intriguing to me that they wanted the drug dogs to be petted.
We, we are looking into that. I know that the chief has been made aware and we're, we're looking to see if that's gonna be an option or not.
It's very cool.
If I'm having a bad day, I just gotta track down Labby or Bella.
It's really fun when they're both in the same room together.
They're friends.
They're so cute.
One of the, just real quick, real story. Dora was giving a talk to a group over last summer. And on the screen, they had both dogs, triple dogs. And Labby saw Bella and she just sat down and stared at the screen. So that was, that was, that was just a little story that I, I got to.
Any other questions?
Oh, I was just gonna come in. I mean, I, I think this is such a wonderful program. And I've definitely seen, you know, both kinds in the schools and see all of the learners' reactions. They're just being so excited, even if they just walk by, you know, one of the, and to your point, Patty, if in addition to like numbers, even just maybe some like brief examples or stories of how they're used. Because I think in the community, people are like, oh, that's cute. But they don't necessarily have a, an idea of like the range of the different things that they're used for. I mean, I would have guessed there is numerous. I'm sure it's probably like many different things each day that they do.
Well, and there's, there's been several times where I've been out of school at the end of the day and I'll be there with the daughter or Dora. And a parent will come up to us and say, hey, this dog has made a difference in my kid's life and this is how. And they don't even realize that when it happened and not, it's just, it's just part of their normal day. I guess you don't really know, you know, who you're reflecting.
Two is great, but we have a lot of elementary schools and middle school, so.
Yeah, we're, we want to get Sari, get some experience as a SRO. She, she's relatively new to patrol, but she's been with the department for a long time and she had a little bit of experience prior to coming. The last part was, so still get her a chance to, you know, go to basic, get in the school for a little bit, get some experience and kind of make sure she knows what she's doing.
At least you have some veterans that follow her along. Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to our OE3 engaging external stakeholders.
This was a collaborative project and I will let, let you all buy it.
So OE3 is pretty short. There are just a couple of things that I wanted to call your attention to. And then I'll turn it back to Beth for the last couple of indicators that we want to call their attention to. So there was quite a few indicators in this year's report that we had to list as unable to calculate because the data come from the Cognia survey. That is not going to be given until next year because that will be the year prior to our visitation. The year prior to our visitation, which is one of the visitation requirements. So that's why you see so many unable to calculates. But then I also wanted to draw your attention to the two indicators, 316 and 333. They were noted as new additions in February 2024. That came from the great conversation we had at Governance Committee about, it's wonderful that we talk about what are the ways that our district communicates and engages with our stakeholders, but what about what's happening at the school level? So we actually pulled out two survey pieces, again, from Cognia, so we can have that qualitative, or excuse me, quantitative piece and have a percentage perspective from our families about how they feel their school is doing. But then we also solicited feedback from our principals to say, in addition to the percentage from Cognia, we want to give you an opportunity to say, at Eastwood Elementary School, you know, I got X percentage from my parents, but then these are the ways in which I have communicated with them. So that maybe help us start to correlate what does result in those higher percentage of parents saying, they feel like they've been engaged in the school community, or they feel like they're communicated. So we talked a lot as a district leadership team about doing it that way, with kind of that collective ownership of what those results would look like versus say, we expect you to do a newsletter X number of times a day. We expect you to post on Facebook, we expect you to do these things, rather kind of seeing what is happening and how do those correlate to the results? And then going from there. So we already have some really good suggestions from our, our buildings. And these are things that they think about a lot, of course, because they're trying to communicate in tiny cities that are schools. And a lot of the platforms that they're using do have analytics in them. So I'm excited for next year when we're able to actually pull some of those things to show you and start to see what does, what does good communication at the school level look like for our families. So those were two things that I wanted to point out for the unable to calculate. And then the indicator 312, that was an indicator that was noted as in compliance with noted exceptions. That's about the accessibility of our website. Just bringing a reminder awareness to the fact that we did receive an LCR complaint last year about some inaccessible documents on our website. Timing of that was really good because, you know, we're ongoing, undergoing a transition to a new website platform. So we've been using the analogy that, you know, we're, we're moving houses and we're not gonna bring all of our old, you know, ratty, ratty clothes and stinky furniture and expired food. And we're not bringing all that stuff from our old house to our new house. We're, we're going through everything and making sure that it's clean and fresh and accessible. So it's just been a really good opportunity to not only fix the things that were brought to our attention, which was some handbook PDFs and some calendar pieces, but just making sure that everything on our website is, is fresh and up to date and accurate. So it's, it's been a big lift, but it's the right work to do. And I'm super excited for what I'm pretty sure will be launched the week of June 24. Fingers crossed.
And I, I just want to thank you for that, Heather. I, Heather is not one, she's a worker, she's not one to tell us a lot of what she's working on. The website has been a huge lift coordinating that with all of our team. So thanks for all your work on that, for your, your diligence and ensuring that it gets done correctly. Appreciate that. The only one I was going to bring to your attention, you can see that some of the areas involve the superintendent directly. And one that was updated was the amount of time engaging with learners, educators, and parents, kind of beyond what is the, you know, typical work. And I think the, the target through governments was discussed at least four times a month. You can see that I meant that, but I did not have, because this was updated in March, we had talked about how, how I would track those evening events. And a lot of evening events aren't on my calendar. So I think the number will actually be higher because I, usually how those happen is I find out there's something going on and, or where it's going on and I have time and I just show up. But I do need to do a little bit better job looking at what those events are because there's just, every night of the week, there's something's going. So you don't want to always pick the same kinds of things and you want to get a mix of things that I think is something I could do a better job on.
And as a reminder, the reason that we left this in here rather than taking it out is Beth does a great job of attending events. But someday when she's not here, what do we want as a board to continue to monitor, to make sure, especially with the new superintendent? So I think that, why we left this.
And this also includes when we're getting into buildings to engage with, with learners and teachers in different capacities. So we try to do that during the week, 20%. Rachel, I, and Vince try to be in buildings 20% of our time for some of those other kinds of things. And then we did update, my participation in the community has changed a little bit and just brought in the broader state, had some opportunities to be on the, be appointed by the governor for the K-12 Federation Council and the subcommittee with that, and then also the literacy task force. So those kinds of activities are not ongoing necessarily. It might be for a period of time, but so, but there goes. I didn't really have anything else to add to that. Unless you think I had anything else.
I'm gonna have to leave. Questions for OE3?
I was just trying to, I think that's trying to manage the Facebook or trying to manage your time and thinking about communication with the community. And all the feedback we got from the bond, you know, the different ones, it's like, they act like we haven't talked to them, you know? How do we, and, and this is just an open-ended question, I really throw open, you know, OE3, but just how do we continue communicating with them and finding what works and what doesn't? And I think, you know, some of those ones, like with the, in elementary school with the seesaw and some of those different, I think if we start adding that and then we can advertise, that makes, you know, we had the elementary, one elementary school or, or middle school or high school, you know, certainly different. If, if, you know, that's one of the, say, back to school night and, and being able to advertise. So probably everybody in that element, elementary school is aware of how seesaw works with it, but those outside aren't. Kind of that doesn't help communicate to those that are not in. But how do we share that message? And, and I don't know if there's an answer. I'm just trying to think of, you know, greater stories to tell.
How do we get that?
To the community on what we're doing, instead of just telling them about the bond. Let's talk about all of it.
Public education in general.
Yeah.
Reminds me of a conversation we, you know, had kind of through the COVID. What did we learn, right? And then deploying what we learned for the better, right? It's just kind of similar, because what did we learn, what we heard, and it's communicated enough or was here or there, so how could we be better, right? So what are we?
Yeah, I've, I've been named of that a lot, I think, with some of the feedback. And one thing, I was talking to some people who live in different parts of the district. And one thing they pointed out is that there might be large pockets of our community and especially parents who do not have much understanding of, of just like the parts of the district in terms of like the different departments, the different functions, things that, I mean, if you like work for a school district or are on the board for a long time, you learn about and you know how they function, but the average person would, especially maybe if they didn't even grow up in this country, would not know just kind of, kind of how, like, what is the basic, like, public education structure and things like that. And so I don't know that it's necessarily the district's obligation to educate the community, but I'm curious about like, what opportunities are there to just share information about kind of like, this is how it works, so that whether it's a community member, especially a parent who wanted to gain information from the district as opposed to just, you know, Googling public education in North Dakota or something like that, they would have a little bit more specific information to our district.
Thinking like a work interview?
Shows, yeah, I mean, a very, like, kind of like John said, like, very open-ended question, but just that, that was something I hadn't thought about in that, again, it's not a clear, like, obligation. It's probably now in one of these policies, but more so an opportunity where, because in my mind, I guess, communication is building and enriching community. And so in my mind, like, the more people understand just how does our public education system work, the better they can engage in it and the more they value it, so.
Interesting idea. We talked about that a lot, but is it really very easy, clear to see that?
Or even, because I think actually Travis was talking about a, a related idea of kind of just like short YouTube videos or different things like that, that could just, maybe we don't discuss every single part of it, but kind of small snippets that are not very long, kind of give you the highlight. Again, as opposed to someone having to Google it and like, the content and things, and then being like, never mind, and they drop it.
Trying to share that what public education is and why you want to be a part of public education. If we don't share our own story, how do we expect people to know the story? So we should control the narrative. And I think I brought back when I was in Salt Lake City, that we went around in the summertime, instead of leaving the billboards where they're like, welcome, you know, happy summer, they put on there, we serve, you know, 10,933 school meals this year. Or we have, you know, how many miles for bus drivers? Or how many books did we read for elementary school or something? You know, just tidbits of information, so when people drove by, they're like, oh, that's really cool. I mean, do you know that our elementary kids read how many books last year? I mean, whatever. And I think those are kind of stories that are little different that still share what public education, for every person who goes by, especially if they're not in the school or so.
Good conversation starters for anybody.
Could you mention how many meals we served this last year? I bet Dana probably knows, she does. I think it would be interesting, or how many miles we put on our buses when we're looking for bus drivers, to say how many miles that they put on. I think it'd just be kind of funny, so. Heard anything else, those were the comments on us.
I, I had one other question. I, I'm not sure exactly how this would function, but, so just to clarify, the Cognia, is that every other year?
Yes, it, however, when we have a district visitation, which is every five years, we have to do it the year prior. So they pushed everything back, but after COVID, they had a hard time getting teams on site. They tried some virtual. So we actually were supposed to be on slate for next year and they moved us back. So now we'll have a gap in our every other year because of it. But you'll see in like Heather's reports, she was looking for a 20% participation rate. Some of them are 40, some of them are 60 required by Cognia. And we just know we are chasing families down and begging them to take the surveys. So we didn't want to do it two years in a row and have it impact. So we'll do it next spring.
Okay. Oh, and that was my idea of even, even if it's not Cognia, thinking kind of like some of the things that were sent out to gather feedback after the bond of even an informal survey that would go out on the non-Cognia years just to have information so that if there were any big shifts, we're not only assessing those things every other year, maybe missing out on. In the interim. I'm not sure like what.
What did we do after the 23 month?
Yeah. Just, I mean, something that could be simple. And I, I don't know that we would necessarily like, community or would put them side by side to compare them, but it would still be some source of information and engage them.
Sari used to be doing year outside of Cognia to our parents.
A lot.
And our staff.
Yeah.
And our learners.
Just trying to find creative ways, which I know Heather's team tries to, you know, we, you get people, bring them together or do a, a virtual session or a, it's hard to know how many replications we're getting in the same voices and how do we engage the unengaged and.
So if we do, it should be.
Yeah, yeah, keep trying. And the Cognia survey unfortunately keeps getting longer. And that gets difficult to, you know, if you can't submit and it gives you another page and we start seeing that people are not finishing surveys and. It's a challenge. Yep.
Entertained motion about OE3?
I'll make a motion to approve OE3 engaging with internal and external stakeholders in compliance.
A second.
John, is there any more discussion? For all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right. Jessica, do you want to cover our home governance meeting?
I did, just talking. Okay. Last week, so last Monday we met for governance, we had two topics. The first was West Fargo Events. We met with Micah Munson, joined our meeting to talk about the WFSA contract. Basically, we reviewed the past year, some of the West Fargo Events management for the Fargo Sports Arena. For those who recall that, he reported on a few different items. In particular, that rental time to outside groups and organizations did exceed goals as well as, and revenue targets surpassed last year. And keep in mind, we have a month left as well on the fiscal year. He did ask for consideration that the contract duration is extended to five years instead of the current three. Right here, right now, we're under a current three-year contract. They also requested in particular 270,000 for the first year of the new contract with a 3% annual escalation thereafter. And it was recommended then that the consideration for administration to begin negotiating, negotiations with West Fargo Events being brought to a future business meeting for the phone work to discuss. So that's where that's at. And then secondly, we discussed indicators surrounding activities. So a discussion on why activities are not monitored like other learner-related metrics. So to do this, the board would first have to decide what they value concerning activities. There is the potential for creating indicators to address the operational desired results for those activities. And it was then stated that any indicators we create should encompass grades K through 12 and not just 9 through 12, since we do value our educational system, obviously not just 9 through 12, and recognizing all those activities, K through 12. There was also a need to develop methods for collecting this data, of course, and then understanding the purpose behind gathering the information. And then lastly, overall administration will investigate how other school districts monitor participation in these extracurricular activities and then provide examples going forward of those methods at a future committee.
This was best night and I totally forgot that would have segued into your conversation.
Well, it just seems like we we could do that, you know, we do the other. It brings all of this great information, so it'd be good to measure that. Forward with them to come up with west models indicators already can be thinking about what what kinds of information is important to you. That's what gets measured at this time.
That's right.
So.
And I think that's really important because especially within activities, I mean, there are a lot of different priorities you can choose just according to your values, but to also have some degree of direction from the board is to like, what are the priorities that you're setting?
Can we go to do some of that during the board retreat in August? Because that would be a good thing to put on the agenda to start. At least deciding what direction we want as a board and then make sure that our team is all on the same page. Because we may say one thing and they're like, oh, and how about or what that looks like, something on their agenda.
Well, and it's maybe instead of being a, you know, one thing comes with so much of it that we can spread it out a little bit. But I think one piece of it is it is complicated and I know when it's reported, it's playing that because you have multi activity students are multiple sports and there's all various different kinds of activities and then there's clubs and then there's, so it's really narrowing it down.
Another thing I had Jessica's read out on the um, sports arena contract is we have the current option in our current agreement to uh, do a renewal. And so why would we do that versus going through the full R F B? Uh, we have the the agreement language that allows us to do that. Um, the increase that they're asking from this year to next year is less than three percent. And then it would only be three percent subsequently after that. Um, and we talked about it at the governance committee level. They have not seen a management fee increase at all in any of the last three years, so it's been zero, zero, zero. Um, and our thinking was if we went through full R F B, knowing that there are likely no other competitive management services, uh, we would likely lose our ability to more um, directly negotiate that fee increase and would then likely uh, be at the mercy of whatever gets submitted for that proposal. Uh, given that the date, and then we have the data that suggests the sports arena is one of the highest performing um, ice arenas financially in the state.
Could end up in the black.
Yes, which is.
Ice arenas.
Yeah.
That's phenomenal. That was really just, that was really just the why. They're doing a good job. We have the opportunity uh, to renew and we think it's in the best interests of of taxpayers um, to control the year over year growth uh, and three percent is people and and frankly, quite a bit less than we see on a lot of our other long term agreements. If you think about Valley Bus, transportation services and and the like. So great summary of just a little added context on why we feel.
To mention, you said if Mike would leave that we do a longer contract, this would be that he stays, that they leave, then we can renegotiate something on that.
Yes, I was working on.
It's really.
On the agreement uh, over the weekend and I added some language, should the West Fargo Events hire a new executive director after July one, twenty twenty four, the school district may um, at its discretion terminate this relationship with the W F E A at any point within the following twelve months upon a ninety day written notice. Um, because I know Mike's expertise in the area is also a huge part of their credibility, so to protect us uh, would also be an important part of any agreement. So thank you for adding that.
He's very quick to say it's a great team and he does. They've done a really nice job. Like his leadership has been.
They could see in the black this year?
Yes.
In the black.
Very much, very collaborative and very.
Nice job for us. All right, anything else? That was will go into action. All right, our first one then is um, take action on this staffing request. And I think this is a little bit of a complicated.
Staffing request, I will turn to.
Yes.
Yeah, this is unique. Um, I'll just start it out by saying that for the most part, what you see on here is um, trading in positions to do things with them. So um, at the top, if you look at the Siebler Schedule Three stipends, um, it is a request to add fifteen leadership stipends to Schedule Three. Uh, Siebler is a special education building leader. I want to say representative. Is that correct? Um, and so at our secondary level, our Sieblers receive an extra period in their day. Um, and so we have been having a really difficult time doing that at the elementary level and staying true to that. Um, just because of the way the elementary day looks um, and guaranteeing that time. Um, and so Director Tennis has been putting her uh, thinking cap on and doing some planning with her team and just trying to come up with a better way to manage this and make sure we're using our staff um, wisely and their time wisely, but making sure that we can do right by our our special education teachers. Um, and so this is a proposal to do a leadership stipend instead of guaranteeing that extra period um, beyond the prep period and then allowing for that planning to happen outside of that um, extra period time. So she is trading in, so if you go down to the bottom of that memo to the offset, a half of a special education teacher in order to fund that, um, in order to fund those fifteen stipends.
So this will not come to negotiations next spring?
Um, it should not come to negotiations because she's had the time to visit with that group of people. Um, and and really they're already missing that time and so it's really to be able to um, honor that.
As long as they know that this is in lieu of.
In lieu of.
Come every time.
Yes. Yeah. Um, it doesn't mean we won't hear about the work of special education. But it does take the place of initial period at elementary because we just have not been able to guarantee it.
Which is good.
Yeah. In addition, you're going to see a request for an assistive technology occupational therapist. This is not a new ad. It is going to be a trade out for, again, if you scroll down, a speech language pathologist adaptive technology position. So we are basically trading out one in order to hire the other. This position already existed in the district and we had a certified teacher filling in. Um, that person has resigned and the person who we'd like to hire is not a certified teacher, but both positions can fill the role. So an O T can fill an assistive tech uh, technology position very well with their background as can an S L P. Um, and so it's just really doing that swap out with the roles in order to fill the position with the best candidate. Uh, and so it was advertised to hire either. Um, and so the person with the best uh, background would be able to fill it. And so it's just asking for that flexibility with those two roles, pretty equivalent in terms of cost.
Makes sense going forward, Brittany, that you just put that in writing, says one or the other.
Yep, and that's what we're asking for, the flexibility to be able to do that.
So it's just one hand going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, exactly. And then the next three areas you see at the top are all about the market study we did um, this year for our classified positions. And with that, uh, we did offer to our buildings and departments, if there was a position or positions that were under market and there was a group of unfilled positions, they were able to trade in some of those unfilled positions with just salaries of those positions. Um, so you do see our special education paraprofessionals and behavior technicians are being requested to be reclassified in order to bring them a little bit closer up to market. And so we are asking to trade in seven unfilled special education paraprofessionals and eight unfilled behavior technicians in order to reclassify them up. And I know it doesn't make a lot of sense to you, um, but we're reclassifying them up four grades on the sped paraprofessionals and up five grades on the behavior technicians. And then in addition, we're converting, and this is more of an equity piece, uh, thirty sped paraprofessionals to B Ts at the high school level for their specialized programs. And this really aligns our current model um, at the high school level because we have not done that, even though they do have specialized programs, those positions have not been put in at B Ts. They're still sped paras, which is not in alignment with what we do at elementary or middle level right now. Um, so it's a little bit confusing, um, but just to make sure that it is clear um, that this is all wrapped into one package, but that is what that cost offset is for.
If we're gonna um, move these over, right, because of the unfilled.
Mm hmm.
So what if we need to fill those later?
We would have to come back and request new positions. Yep, they're not, they're, they go away essentially. Yep.
Now, we've continuously had that conversation, you know, do we keep coming back to ask for more positions when we have unfilled? And so we just said we're going to trust the board if we can come with you to say that this is a true need, that you will do that instead of just having them sit there not filled, so really being creative in staffing.
And it does not leave us with no unfilled positions, just so we still have unfilled.
Yep, right.
Um, but it does allow us to increase the salary right now and then continue to have some unfilled at a higher salary level. Excuse me. So hopefully we can fill those remaining unfilled positions. And I'm assuming you'll continue to assess for regardless of how many we can fill, what the actual need is. Yes, and and Rachel's team does a great job. Director Tennis's team does a great job of that. They're constantly looking at the ratios and the need at the different schools. So for example, we're opening metal art, they're taking a para from one location, moving it over here based on what it's are and where needs are. So just saw it happen today, so.
I'm pulling a small group of preschool that volunteer. Um, maybe you could have all told, uh, to join a group to come back and look at how we're allocating paras to the buildings because everybody, you know, if you don't know, you don't know. So first I want to give them the foundational understanding of how we make it work so that it's autonomous and the building explains as best we can while creating apples to apples-ish feel within the group uh, groups, elementary, um, and then middle school and high school. And then we'll take any suggestions from there. Um, what can we do to refine? What should we be doing? What should we be tracking? Or data that we can be gathering to better inform how we're allocating paras? We just fallen a little bit behind in not filling paras doesn't do us any good and looking at those unfilled positions does nobody any good. They sit unfilled and we just hope and pray at night or in the middle of the night. These positions and then, so this hopefully will fill, fix our foundational issue. Right? Amongst other things, uh, training in para onboarding is all happening this summer. Super crowded that work, but in addition to that, this is something that we believe can get us uh, standing on a stronger foot. And then uh, moving forward, um, you know, really looking at how with the pairs that we have, are we allocating them in the right way?
And then the last couple are just reduction of days for existing positions. So we have a group of mental health therapists funded through a S B M H grant. Um, there's six positions, five of which are filled right now. And after assessing the work of these positions after one year, um, there is a request to reduce the number of days from two hundred and fifteen to two hundred and ten, just based on the needs of those positions. You did see on the agenda, um, there's two of those positions currently that are filled by certified staff and they put in the request to reduce their days. So you do see that reduction. Um, and then in addition, the B C V eight positions, we have three positions, none of which are filled currently. Um, but to align that, a reduction of five days for those positions as well. And then you just see that on the bottom as an offset as a lower cost at the proposed amount.
So the benefit dollars is just based on the increase of the wage increase, not the total, evidently.
Correct. Yeah, we're just using the proposed amount and the proposed reduction.
I'll make sure I'm just a bit, because normally you see that's not higher than.
Yep, just on those five days you're looking at it for.
All right.
That's everything on there for this very unique staffing memo.
We do a nice job with the writing underneath, though. I did understand after I went through and read the bottom.
Good deal. Very confusing. Lots of help.
I think it's good instead of leaving those positions open. I mean, that doesn't do any.
It's not the first year.
No, there's been a lot of us, though, even even though we've done some movement even before, but.
I'm sure with the paras that are affected by that, that this happens, that if this doesn't show up on the paycheck, that we actually give some credit for.
We send out emails directly to them. Um, so we did it last time. We did a request too. So we have sent them directly an email. It's a little hard because right now we're not in session.
Right.
Um, and this will happen before then. So we'll send something out um, at the start of the year again, um, because they won't be getting a paycheck right now.
Just when we start doing negotiations again, as these conversations come up, I want to make sure and tackle up the salary study and what we've done. And this is a pretty, this is the one step, two, three, four and five steps that we eventually did that to make sure that we put that top wheel list that we we created, we did, we listened and we moved.
It'll be that and I think bus drivers will be the other one because we've done that group several times as well. Um, so I think those two will be our biggest adjustments, but we've done several market adjustments as well.
Brother called the update that I did with the.
Yeah.
The short video.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that that now is part of our monitoring. It's that 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 happens every year and these kinds of things have to be explicitly pointed to.
As many times as we can, it's easy to forget.
Yes.
Because I'm sure we're going to hear it, so.
And that was the thing. It's like, help us remember what we've done when we start talking to them.
Yeah, that'll be true.
A short list would be great because I, I mean, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
One date, one year. Yep.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions? Change motion then, but staffer requests.
I'll move to approve the staffing request for the twenty fourteen, twenty five.
You, Jessica?
Second.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, um, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same sign? Motion carries. All right, moving on to review and take action on the district health insurance plan. And for this, I first want to thank Mr. Buckmeyer for all his work on the insurance committee for the advancements that have come from that committee, the collaboration that's come from that committee, the lot of work. Thank you for that. And we want to go ahead and explain what we're doing.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. President. It's definitely a team effort. Brittany uh, is is always there as Xterra. Patty uh, has been in the trenches with us um, on these for quite some time. There really is a a team effort. I have to give a lot of credit. I don't think they're here right now. Um, but the representatives from the West Fargo Education Association uh, have have been, using lack of a better term, incredible uh, in terms of their thoughtful participation. Um, thinking like a fiduciary, when you're on the front lines with kids, can sometimes be um, two very different hats to wear. Uh, and they wear them uh, very admirably. So I I have to say, um, just my level of appreciation for the role um, that the W F E play, W F E A plays in the district uh, has has continued to to go up, uh, which is saying something because I've historically been pretty critical of teachers. So um, the changes that you have before you tonight, I would say are in some ways a second chapter of of changes that you all approved in September of twenty twenty two. Uh, and the problem that we're trying to solve is we need the value of our compensation packages, which are quite strong um, to be felt by our team members. And so we had made a number of changes um, in September of twenty twenty two, outlined in the memo to move us uh, along. We're having a better value based compensation plan. Uh, and as soon as that was approved by the board, we said, okay, we got to keep going. What's what's next? Uh, and so the three changes that you see before you tonight are the culmination of work that has basically been going on ever since the last approval uh, that the board made in September of twenty twenty two. So at the highest level, uh, it involves changing our health insurance carrier, which would be a significant change for the district. Uh, however, after much thoughtful consideration and I would say actually encouragement by our teachers, uh, we'd be recommending to move to Health Partners, which is the same carrier for both Fargo Public and Morehead Public Schools. Uh, we would be looking to realign the basically the value quotient of our high deductible health plan. Currently, uh, the West Fargo Public Schools is paying me to have health insurance because the contributions made to my health savings account and not me because I'm the business manager, me because I enroll in the high deductible health plan, to be clear. Um, but to have a lived example, HSA contributions are more than my premium deductions. And at a time, um, we had contributed the difference in the cost between the traditional plan and the high deductible plan as a way to show to employees that we're trying to invest proportionally in them regardless of the plan that they chose. But over time, since we made that decision quite a while ago, um, the planned costs have just gone in different directions. So now that difference is so great that that HSA contribution is now higher than um, the deducted premiums. And I think I put in the memo that is financially unsustainable, which uh, paying people to have health insurance is uh, not sustainable. So there's a couple other changes to the financial components, but the biggest thing is that we would be moving uh, away from making HSA contributions on the districts behalf and that is solely. away from making HSA contributions on the district's behalf, and that is solely from, you run the actuarial tables on what the value of each plan is, we want to have those plans be fair. So just like when we talk with our teachers unions, there shouldn't be one salary schedule if you're elementary and one salary schedule if you're secondary, the whole idea is fairness in the salary schedule. Similarly, the value of one health plan should be comparable to the other plan. And right now, our high deductible health plan is misaligned. And then the last one is we have been, I would say, behind, to use the phrase charitably. Most of the self-funded plans, industry moves around GLP-1 drugs, which are the ones that you'll see Ozempic, Wegovy, are becoming sort of popular weight loss drugs. We are very much behind the eight ball in terms of how those have been governed from a pricing standpoint. So this would move our pricing to better align with what would be considered the industry standard for diabetics as well as non-diabetics. So you see in there, we do that pricing differently because there are, it's different rationale. And so the, those will be, I think, priced a little bit more appropriately and more consistent with other drugs that are covered by our self-funded plan. I did include in the attachment down on the very last slide, just to give you a sense of, these are our current year-to-date paid prescriptions as during the month of April. And most of these are not any more than a year or two old. And so the trend line that we're seeing for a lot of these GLP-1s is quite significant. And so again, this is much a parity move to make sure we're treating these drugs more similar to those of similar classifications that are, that operate slightly differently and making sure that we're being cognizant of the overall financial impact on the district, so.
Nick has said that we shouldn't cover these at all if they weren't diabetic drugs.
Correct.
We decided to eat the weight loss that we still cover, but there would just be a co-pay to that.
Yes, and I would say we are still on the more generous pricing structure if you compare to other comparable drugs by classification. However, recognize that this is a significant shift and we are trying to incentivize the use of the compound pharmacy that will be available as part of our near-site clinic. So I think that's a great point, Patty, it is, it is not even catching us up all the way, but trying to take a significant step towards being a little bit more thoughtfully priced.
I think how many meetings we've had with this, it's been a lot. And for teachers in the union to make a change after the last two or three negotiations, we know it's in the contract, wasn't easy, so I really applaud every one of them saying, we got to find a way to save money so we can put it back into the salary line because we keep that much total comp. And this will definitely help, but to move away from Blue Cross, I don't, favorite Warren favorite than some of the other people on the, any, so it'll be interesting. Well, with you guys, starting.
Any consolation, I moved to Health Partners this year too, I really like them.
There you go.
So. There we go, that's good.
The reference calls have been good, but the better we get, the better we feel, so.
Any questions for me, Brian?
I was just gonna say, I'm really excited about the creation of the near-site clinic and I remember it's just generally timed on where it was going to be, but until I saw the sign, I didn't realize that I think it's just a fabulous location, that's also just great visibility, and it's a heavily used.
Does everybody know where Costco? Have you seen it?
Right by Costco, just a couple blocks south on the east side of the road. That was our driving priority to have something that could be centrally located both during the school day and if you need to use it on a weekend, it's just off the interstate. It is technically opened, has had a soft open last week, and they're working out some of the kinks. Hop by and introduce yourself as a board member, I'm sure they would be thrilled to meet you. There will be a block party of sorts and our first of two official openings at the end of June, which is when they're going to do sort of their traditional grand opening, but then we've also noted that our, I don't know, Heather probably has a technical term for this, communication saturation is a little lower in the summer. So we will be doing a sort of back-to-school grand opening in August or September when people are a little bit more plugged in, but we certainly want people.
School physicals, they'll do our bus physicals for.
Team physicals, occupational health screenings.
Well, possible for two of them.
It's going to really be, I think, an exciting game.
I think so too. Very exciting.
Can see why they want to stop opening them to start, though they're saying you could get slammed and it'd be nice fun to get their. Yes. Searings before we.
Perfect example of engagement. You haven't have something, always too funny back in your team members jackets. Well, I will move to approve the adjustments to the district's health insurance plan as outlined in the administrative recommendation.
Jessica?
Second.
John, is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does it pose same sign? Motion carries.
It's a really big one, a really good one.
All right, let's move on to consent agenda.
Move to approve.
John?
Second.
Yeah, is there any special consent agenda? All those in favor of approving this consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Does it pose same sign? Motion carries. Did anyone notice, I should have said, did anyone notice the number of copies that are district-approved in that memo? 22 million copies, one point four for the other was 23 and a half million pieces of paper, so we improved the copy for that. I was shocked, I'm, no way of law school, that was a lot. All right, superintendent's report.
I have nothing new to report, other than, yes, I don't know.
All right.
Doing well.
Anything else we could craft before we turn off our recording, but don't everybody run away? Thank you for the great graduation, did everyone get their stools turned back in?
Oh, man, I actually turn that every day.
So everyone else is turning in? All right, so we're going to additionally adjourn, but before, Dan, you ran away.
You've been heading to the ground.
Reminder to vote.